Select Board, Tom Southwick, Monday, April 4th, 2022. Present tonight are Selectman Moguln, myself, Russell Fox, CIO Carl Steinhardt, Industrial Assistant Robin Solak, and I believe do we have Mr. Dede on Zoom?
We do not at this time, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Dede is traveling. He's planning on zooming in at some point. So I guess we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I see Randy Brown there. We haven't picked on him in weeks, so it's his turn. Thank you. Before we go to public comments, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Don Prifty, who passed away yesterday. Don is a former Fire Commissioner, well-known businessman in town. Of course, Prifty Park was named after his father Nucci, who was a longtime Selectman and also a school committee member. So if we could please have a moment of silence for Don Prifty. Thank you. We're now going to public comments. This is an opportunity that anyone would like to make a statement to the Select Board. This is your opportunity. I'd ask you, please state your name and address. We're going to start with people in this auditorium first, and then we'll go to Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? I see no hands going up. I see a hand going up. Go ahead.
My name is Kenneth Eggleston. I live in 4054 Mountain Road, Southwick, Connecticut. And I'm here this evening representing 141 Congammon Road. And I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that today, a petition was given to the office for a license for the use of the property on Congammon Road in Southwick for the purposes of continuing to use said parcel as additional parking for the business.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see any hands. Is there anyone on Zoom? Oh, Mr. Dede is here now. So Mr. Dede is present on Zoom. Is there anyone for public comments on Zoom?
Attorney Matthew Doneo. I'm counsel to Kenneth Eggleston, senior, who just spoke. And we were putting forward the petition for a license for the use of some property on Congammon Road in Southwick for the purposes of continuing to use said parcel as additional parking for the business.
Is that it, Attorney?
That's it for now. We just sent this petition in today, and we just kind of want to bring it to the Select Board's attention that, you know, this is the direction that we're going to be moving in. I've had some discussions with Town Council and counsel to the Planning Board, just to decipher what their intention was or the Planning Board's intention was.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, we're going to move on. The first thing we're going to acknowledge payroll warrant number 2223 dated 3/28/22 in the amount of $239,589.03. I need a motion to approve the open session minutes dated 3/28/22.
Mr. Vice Chairman, can we also make an omnibus and approve the draft, the budget meeting of March 19th, 2022, in the same motion? So move.
Russ Fox will second that. The motion was made by Doug Moguln. It's a roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes. Doug Moguln, yes. Joe Dede, yes. Okay. We need a motion to approve the executive session minutes of 3/28/22.
So move.
Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes. Doug Moguln, yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
Okay. 6:05, our first appointment is with the Ag Commission Chairman and candidate Sage Fury. Excuse me. To discuss appointment and realignment of other current members. Mr. Hanson on, yeah, I see. Bert, you're on Zoom?
I'm here.
Bert Hanson, Chairman of the Ag Commission.
And Mr. Fury is there as well.
All right. So we tabled this to this week because we were waiting for clarification from Town Council. And did we get that clarification?
No.
We did not get a clarification?
That was only for the reconstitution of the other members of the board, but I believe what Bert was requesting was for this individual to become an alternate member, which that would follow along the one-year cycles, Bert?
Yes, that's right.
Right. So that could be accomplished this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Kurt, is that correct to your understanding?
Yes, that's right. We just would like to get Sage Fury on as an alternate member. The other issue, as you know, is to have one of the current alternates become a full Commissioner. We would like that to be Brett Coulson, but that's what we're waiting for Town Council on.
Correct. All right. So Mr. Moguln, you'd like to make a motion?
So we can get half of this done tonight. Great. So we can, I will make a motion to appoint Sage Fury as an associate member through June 30th of this year. And then we'll get it back onto the regular appointment cycle as we head past town meeting. That'd be my motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion. It's a roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Moguln, yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. This has been a while coming, so I've got some champagne here. I'm going to open up now.
All right, we've taken care, we've made one person happy tonight.
There you go.
All right.
That's our quota.
That's our quota. We're moving on now. Okay. Going on to our action folder. So the first thing is to act on the reappointments of the Board of Registars per the chairperson and Town Treasurer Collector's recommendation. And I believe we have the chairperson on Zoom. This is Morris. All right. Hi Shirley, you're there?
You're muted, Shirley.
Got you. Yep.
There you go. Can you hear us, Shirley?
Yes.
No. Tell Don to go in a different room. All right. And Shirley May Morris is the chairperson of the Board of Registars, and they are requesting the reappointment of following members: Don W. Morris, Nancy M. Zedun, and Shirley May Morris. And we're to establish a one-year?
Two-year and a three-year term.
Okay. Shirley, do you have any recommendation that you'd like to make to this board?
We wanted to have the, we're still too close. Staggered?
Yes.
And I don't have any preference as to how that is being staggered.
And just so we're clear, the under the statute, this term is marked April 1st to March 31st of these terms when they're made.
Okay, so if we appoint people tonight, or reappoint people tonight, when are we saying?
Right there.
It's all right there.
So it'd be a year term when they fire.
I think, okay. Ms. Moguln, would you like to make a recommendation or a motion?
I just want to note for the record that I see, is it done also on Zoom as well?
Yes.
Shirley, do you have a preference for a member for one, two, and three years based on the three of the year?
No.
No. However you want to do it is fine, just as long as we're reappointed in April of the following, of every year after this, as per required by the law. I believe it requires that the registrars are appointed in April.
Whoever the one-year one is, they'll be up next year for a two-year term.
Let's do it in order, 3, 2, 1, as it's written right here.
I think that's a great.
So my motion would be Don Morris, Don W. Morris for a three-year, Nancy M. Zedun for a two-year, and Shirley May for a one-year. That's how it's written on my paper.
All right. Russ Fox will second that motion. It's a roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Moguln, yes.
Joe Dede, yes.
All right. Thank you, Shirley.
All right, thank you.
Two people happy? I don't know. Can you hear you happy? No answer, that can't be. Okay. All right. All right. Now, we, next thing is to approve a sick leave bank request for C. Beder?
Bador.
Bador. Kerry Bador.
Yep, we have an individual who is eligible for the program and qualifies for it to be moved. And they're done in increments of 30 days, which constitutes six work weeks.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make the motion for the sick leave bank withdrawal for C. Beder.
Russ Fox will second that motion. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
All right. The next thing we have is approve the Attorney General's Office Opioid Settlement Agreement for Massachusetts Municipalities.
You want to give us a? Well, that's something that we had entered into a number of months ago with all the class action suits by the various attorneys general by the different states, and it's to try to recover funds from the large opioid settlement agreement. So the funds would come into each municipality, and they'd be used for certain purposes within the guidelines of the Attorney General's Office, and that they'd be in what's on their use.
Okay. Do we know what that amount is yet?
No, we do not. And I think there's a range. You can see by their front guidance letter. So we do not have an exact amount yet. I think they want to see in terms of who's getting these back into their office and how it will end up going into an aggregate account to be calculated.
Like to make a motion, Mr. Moguln?
I'll make a motion to approve the Attorney General's Office Opioid Settlement Agreement.
Okay, Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Designate the Chair to sign.
I'll make a motion to designate the Vice Chair to sign it, right in the absence of the Chair. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman? Go.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
I can't believe Russ made two people happy. I'm a little confused. Anytime Russ runs a meeting, it usually goes downhill. So this is all new to me. I'm sorry.
It's early. It's early.
Okay. All right, moving right along. The motion is made and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote again just for clarification. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Moguln. All right.
I'm just the clerk.
Review DPW fiscal '23 budget in price increase for tractor, hot box, and paving box equipment items. And I see our DPW Director here, and not just one item's going up, but they're all going up.
Yeah, so as you know, I submitted a budget request in January based on quotes I got posted from it at that time, and the world has changed a little bit since then, in terms of inflation and fuel prices, the prices have come up. So I asked for upholding quotes from those vendors, and which you've had a party with, the new numbers that I asked considered fifty-four percent.
Okay. So over the three items, it looks like the tractor mower attached with attachments is an increase of approximately $13,000. The hot box, approximately a $3,000 increase, and the paving box, approximately a $4,000 increase, for a rough total of an increase around $20,000 due to the high inflation and other factors. That's FYI going into our budget this time.
Right, with your full board and your finance committee too, eventually.
Okay. And the Finance Committee was notified too. Okay.
Yep, they are aware.
All right. Approve Letter of Understanding with DPW Director Randy Brown for fiscal '23 through '25. I believe everybody's had an opportunity to review that.
In light of this new information?
Well, we should probably reduce it by 20,000, right?
Well, plus next year.
Plus next year.
I'll make a motion to approve the Letter of Understanding for DPW Director Randall Brown for fiscal year '23 to '25.
Russ Fox will second that. It's a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
That's number three, Mr. Chairman.
It's not over yet.
Approve Southwood Fire Department Station Project Closeout Invoice and Change Order Number One from Russo Barr. That's to do with the completed project at the Firehouse. So we have Mr. Lawler here, who is our Clerk of the Works and former building inspector. Mr. Lawler, would you like to fill us in?
Yeah, we're giving back $69,000 on the project, 69 and change. And I think it is.
67 and change, yeah. And then, so that along with some other monies in a miscellaneous account will be revoted at, when we go to town meetings for this roof project, because they can be repurposed for a light purpose. So that'll be an offset toward this project. So that's why we have to close that out.
Okay. And the amount is $67,710.07, to be exact.
Yeah.
And I think some of that, you get a lot of credit for. I think you did an outstanding job as Clerk of the Works, and we look forward with you working on this project here at Town Hall. Hopefully you can save us some money over here, too.
Can you bring that one in at about 1.4 million under, please? So just so that I understand this, and Russ, you now have the opportunity to make about 10,000 people happy tonight. This project's going to be under budget by about $68,000.
Correct.
Mr. Clerk of the Work, and former, not only building inspector, but zoning enforcement officer as well.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
Thank you very much for your hard work. It looks like it turned out great. Doesn't leak, and now the window doesn't leak anymore either.
Well, actually, yeah, and the window was a change order that actually was.
Went cost.
Correct. So this would have been a bigger deduction. So let's just reduce that one.
Thank you very much.
But again, it's going to be, and that's the importance of us doing this, is to close this out over there and get ready to redirect these funds into a warrant article that will be for this roof project.
Well, thank you. All right. According to the Vice, no, the Clerk, Mr. Chairman, that's $10,003 so far.
All right, I can't double dip, because they all residents.
Okay, 10,000.
Let's go with the 10,000. Okay. So you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
So moved.
Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye. Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Okay. Approve Design Services Change Order with Russo Barr for Town Hall Roof/HVAC Design Project. Mr. Steinhardt?
That is your follow-up from your group meetings over the last couple of months, where you changed the scope of services for the HVAC, you add some more, you know, services to it for a lot of the inside work, because before it was going to be mostly outside work. So this reflects the need to, for $72,000 for that, to get that part to town meeting and out to bid, and then another $18,000 will be for the construction period, and that'll be voted on during the acceptance of the bids in May for the project. So I would ask that the Chair be authorized to work with the CIO to compute where those dollars will come from and to sign off on it and issue that change order with the designers. And we'll also be confirming with the Chairman of the Finance.
So moved. Russ Fox will second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye. Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Okay, next thing is a motion to accept Southwood Police Department donation amount of $15 from Kenneth Peppka? Is that right?
Peppka?
Peppka? Okay.
So moved.
Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Approve Agreement with Jablonsky, diversity architect for police station roof cupola assessment. $2,000? Is that right? Or no? Yes.
Yep, that's something that Arthur worked on with the committee.
Okay. Did you want to add anything, Art?
Just to say that there was $5,000 approved of CPC funds for this project, which is only the assessment, but a thousand bucks. About 20 years ago, we did a church renovation. It was a historic building built in 1948, and these guys really performed well. So I had them in here to meet with the historic commission, and the guys, and they approved the contract that I sent them, and they were asking for your signature about it.
Mr. Hamburg, I spoke with him too. It was fine with it.
Mr. Moguln?
So moved.
Russ Fox will second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
All right. The next thing is approve DPW request for Claus Anderson Road-Johnson Brook Bid Award of $791,900 to Keneflick? Keneflick Corporation allocate $168,000 from fiscal '22 $1 million bond and authorize more vining paving for the entire length. Mr. Brown, would you like to talk about these projects?
Sure, there's a lot here. I hope it's not too confusing. But so the first item was we opened bids for the Claus Anderson Road project. We did 11 bids, a little bit of it was Keneflick Corporation, so we ran up the bid price, looking for a reward for that project. So as part of that, that is bringing grant money through the energy program, which requires a 25% match. So that match could be in-kind services or condemnation of in-kind service plus dollars. So we're not going to have, based on the price, we're not going to have enough in-kind services to make up that whole match, 25%. So we need to have some local dollars to make up that match. And so the way any fee works is you can't use chapter nine of the work to do that, so you have your local dollars. So what I'm looking to do is, we did get the $1 million for paving last year, just reallocating some of that money, some money that we were going to use under the local, put that towards chapter nine, just so we can make this work for the Claus Anderson project.
So just shift around eligible use funds, what they can be used for.
Yeah, exactly. We're not everything we agreed on last year, we're still going to do. We have the money for it.
Just a different pot.
Reallocated those. Actually, I have a more project to show.
Okay. So we're making motion to award the bid and also to authorize the movement of $160,000. Moguln?
And there's no debate that all of, you couldn't pick a section of mortvining not to pay, that would be a crime, right?
Yeah. There was some discussion about going all the way down where I think at a certain point last year, on the sheet, there was a question mark. So Laura looked at that question mark, and it was a need. So that's I would clarify.
So it was the allocation and then the authorization.
Third or fourth sheet has the allocation of costs for the whole project.
Are we in agreement on that?
Right, we're going to do three motions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we lay it all out. Now we can do the voting part.
Okay.
So first, I'll make a motion to reallocate $160,000 from fiscal year '22 budget for paving and infrastructure for Claus Anderson Road-Johnson Brook Culver replacement project.
Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
And I'll make a motion to award the Claus Anderson Road-Johnson Brook Culver replacement project to Keneflick Corporation at the base bid of $791,900.
Russ Fox will second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
And the third motion, provided that motorhome that's in the right of way is moved, that we will pave mortvining all the way.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Doug Moguln will second, or second?
I second it.
So you're going to vote for it.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moguln, for doing that. All right. Next thing I have is to discuss the Westfield News Business and Industry Journal advertisement.
Yeah, that usually comes in as a request each year, and it's somewhere between $250 to $425, depending upon what you want to get relayed.
$250 to $425, and we normally take that out of our gift account?
Yeah.
Because there are sufficient funds?
Yes.
To do a small ad?
Small one?
Small one, yes. I'll make a motion to do a smaller ad in the Westfield News Business and Industry Journal advertisement.
Okay, Russ Fox will second that. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Okay. We're going on to new business. And review special town meeting and annual town meeting articles received. We got CPCs, Brass Rail and Other Recurring Votes, have Gregoire, Lincoln Road, private driveway access, school votes, town hall, roof, HVAC design funds, and Planning Board. So we have several so far, correct?
Well, right here is your.
Okay.
So you got three separate draft warrants articles for the Planning Board. So those, there's no surprise. We've known for a while that these could be coming to you because you referred them when they came in months ago as requests to the Planning Board for all the statutory meetings and so forth. And it appears as though they've held all of these necessary hearings, and they've closed them, and the Chairperson of the Planning Board is ready to make recommendations for their adoption at the next town meeting, because that has to be done within six months of their closing and voting on them. Those are, well, those have also been sent on to Town Council to be put to form. Sometimes that relates to codification and citations and so forth. So if he has any issues with them, he will address them, Chairman Doherty and Mr. Don.
Okay.
Okay, so those are pretty straightforward.
Right.
No time for anybody to be commenting on those things. We'll be on town meeting floor.
Okay. And the next one I have here is our, is the Mr. And the next one I have here is Art, is Mr. Gregoire, and Gregoire and his wife are here tonight. It's been, this was submitted.
Well, it came in more as a letter. It's not really a warrant article, but it's, it looks as though it would be something that the planning board would look at because they're the ones who create, you know, convert private ways to public ways and deal with acceptances and things of that nature.
Okay, so.
Just go to the planning board? Because there's nothing from the planning board recognizing this.
But, Paul, why don't you introduce your name and your address, please? And speak loudly or come up closer.
That usually doesn't go to a town meeting. That usually starts with them, you know, and they go through a process, and then if they need assistance from council, they'll do that. So, and then usually if a road's going to be accepted, then it goes, then it makes it to a town meeting later on. But are there other steps that have to happen before this comes, before the select board to go under a warrant? Paul, can you speak a little louder? People on Zoom cannot hear.
Matter of fact, Paul, why don't you bring a chair and come right up here closer to this?
Everybody's in. Yep, she just texted me that she couldn't get in. I, I, correct.
Can you? Whoop.
Oh, it's. Everybody's in that can get in.
So anyway.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
There were trees lining both sides of Lincoln Road all the way back. Well, you're familiar with the area.
Correct. Right.
And like I said, the gate went up. That was Mr. Sofinowski, a real pleasant sort. Same. You remember Herb Pace, who's now left us? Herb was defense overseer in the town of Southwick for many years. He went up that road one day, he told me, says, Sofinowski pointed a shotgun at my face and said, get out of here. That's the kind of nice guy he was. He did that to me too, so. I, yeah, I was, I was chatting with him one night, one afternoon. He was parked up by the gate, protecting property, of course. And some hunters came out of the woods. Started getting incensed. I mean, just excited. Next thing I know, they go out and go, he said, he reaches over for thirty revolver, and I said, you better put that down. Pleasant sort of guy. But then they started, he went in and chopped all the trees down, including those with the barbed wire. So there were no more remnants of where the road was. I mean, he did a nice job putting in the pasture for the sheep, it's true.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. Yeah. So Lincoln Way. Randy, is Lincoln Way?
I can, I have some.
Private way?
I had discussions with Mr. Gregoire. So Lincoln Road ends before Mr. Gregoire's property. So he has no frontage off of Lincoln.
Correct.
At the end of the road, there's a gate. Sofinowski preserved the gate. That was put in, I don't know, I don't know how long ago, but anyways, that, okay, so it was put in, and, but that's where property ends at that. All of our records show that's where Lincoln Road ends. We have recorded plans by surveyors showing the road as an allocation. So unfortunately, Mr. Gregoire has no frontage off of Lincoln Road. He's trying to seek that access off with him. My understanding is that property is maintained by conservation commission. So he should be seeking an easement through the conservation commission to access his parcel through Lincoln. I'm not sure we have in front of you what that says, but that was going to be.
I guess I was going to try to do a little investigating here to see and ask a couple of questions around what we're trying to do here, right? And then try to point it in the right direction. You're absolutely right. But. So this, the parcel where the gate is, is at the border of what was, is the Sofinowski piece today, Sofinowski Preserve. So that's town property. Yes?
Randy said the road ends at the gate. But we have maps here going back to eighteen seventy that show Lincoln Road going all the way back, almost to the Connecticut line.
So you're, you're going to have a lawyer, not a lawyer, a surveyor revisit that, correct? And try to show Lincoln Road extended further than where it is? That was my understanding, is what you were trying to, trying to.
I don't think we need a surveyor for that, because there's nothing we can survey. The man chopped down all the trees.
The only access off of Lincoln Road is there, there is a right of way to Plachius family due to tree cutting rule on their property, which is what's behind the Sofinowski. That is reported, but Mr. Gregoire does not have that same language, same rights.
I, I don't, I don't want, I just, I'm, okay. I was just trying to get into, so there is a bit of a property dispute, but the town is involved because the gate is apparently on town property. And then there's a differing of opinions as to where, where the road lies legally and who has an easement or a right of way across it to get to this parcel. And I'm sorry, but this parcel, which is yours, correct?
I believe that's correct. I can't tell from here.
I can come, uh, that's all right. This, this parcel's yours. This is Lincoln Road.
Right.
And the problem is the bridge too far right here, right? Gotcha. Okay. And this.
Go ahead.
My other, I just have one other question. This is maybe, this letter is from you on town letterhead? Gotcha. I, when I read it the first time, I just didn't quite understand it. No, not throwing it in jail, I was trying to, I couldn't figure it out. Okay. Thanks.
And as far, as far as Mr. Plachius and his right of way, you'll notice that what was turned into the registry by Mr. Sofinowski, that he paid ten dollars to, Mr. Plachius paid him ten dollars. I have spoken to Mr. Plachius. Mr. Plachius says, he charged me ten thousand dollars for that. That sounds more like Sofinowski. He was not the kind of person who said, okay, ten bucks, that's fine. He just wasn't.
All right. I think based on what we've heard, Paul, this isn't ready for a warrant article. There's got to be a lot more done before this is something that could go in front of the voters.
When it's in the right direction, we'll take it.
I, I think Randy had one avenue that your attorney could probably begin the process with conservation, since they are the trustees of the Sofinowski Preserve.
As if, as if the property. That was already researched, so his lawyer or surveyor could use that as a beginning.
But does the, does the conservation, and I don't know the answer, but conservation would be one to answer. If they could grant an easement across that, be in a position legally to put a warrant article together, there may be a conservation restriction on this land that you can't do it.
Exactly, there may be something that prohibits that by the granting agency that helps.
Swim lane. If it's conservation's property, it's theirs to decide, right? So.
But also questions that can all be researched, but it's not going to happen now.
No, but I mean, that's, but I want to give Mr. Gregoire an answer as well, as far as direction to go. I would. Couple things. One is, just from experience on the planning board, is if someone wanted to survey it to try to understand if the gate is or isn't in the right place and then figure out who's right or wrong. The other is to just talk to conservation and see if they're willing to grant an easement subject to town meeting approval, because the only one who can grant an easement is the voter of town meeting. But if they be in a position to do that, given all the other conservation restrictions that may exist on that property as part of the deal when we came to acquire it from Sofinowski. And then you'll know where we, where we can or can't go from there, I think.
Our contention, I say ours, lawyer myself, is that gate should have been put up in the first place. Because Lincoln Way, a road, you know, access shouldn't have had a gate.
I, I guess, I don't know, I don't have that plan, I only have this one. I don't know.
Well, you look it up on the G S I Southwick, you'll find they actually show path all the way to my property. That shows it right there.
Then I think a surveyor is the only one who could delineate that. And I don't know, I don't know. But that's my, just Doug Mogul's opinion, whether, and whether if there's further action needed, it would have to either be from, you know, probably from conservation. But the first point is to try to find out where that road actually does end. And if the gate is placed incorrectly, well, then that can be worse.
Incorrectly, it shouldn't be there. But anyway. I did not come up with the G S I map to Southwick, but they show a line, a path all the way to my property. I think you have it there. If you look at it closely. See, I have the number one. This one here. Yeah, what's that? Right here.
Yep. I was going to look it up.
Okay. Here's another one that I didn't miss getting. Gate there. This is the G S I, I didn't make this up. So it shows that the road exists.
A right of way, not that, it shows.
It shows, I don't, it shows something.
Right away, my access, it doesn't give legal privileges. But also if that's Gregoire's property, at least for some distance. I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not a surveyor, I'm an attorney, and I'm not even on the planning board anymore. But I, I see it, guy, that's what, I just, I'm looking at the same thing.
Okay.
I see it. But somewhere, if there is a right of way that exists, it has to be recorded. And at the registry it needs. And that should be a legal document to show who has that right of way. Because a right of way belongs to someone. It's not just available for anyone, it's passage over a property, right?
I, I don't know if Mr. Lincoln ever did anything like that, but back in those.
It wouldn't show on the map if there was not a recorded right of way somewhere. So someone should be able to find it.
I see what you're saying.
Right? Because else, if it was gone, or if someone were to purchase it, they could retire it. If whoever, if the conservation was a party to that easement, and they wanted to, and it was granted to Mr. Plachus, and Mr. Plachus was willing to sell it back to the town, the town could say, here's your ten dollars back and retire the easement, and that would record that, and it would erase it from the map. That tells me that, just from what I'm seeing, that it still exists today. Someone has a right of way across there. I don't know whom it is, right? We'd have to, someone should find that document, whether it's a surveyor or an attorney or someone should find that document to understand the right of way. You may be able to work with Mr. Plachus. I don't know if he's still alive. Or whoever.
Or he's way down the back.
Don't know. I, this is what I'm just telling you. I just, there's, there's multiple steps to go through from here.
Yeah, I guess the bottom line, Paul, is, you know, we don't have a warrant article here. It's nothing that we can prepare.
Fair enough.
You know, I think Mr. Mogul is giving you some good advice. Deal, deal with your attorney. You know, try to find that easement. You know, a title attorney maybe might be the best avenue. And then, then from there, start a dialogue with conservation, and then conservation and the town can have a conversation. But at this point, you know, we, we certainly don't have a warrant.
Our, our point was that if Lincoln Road goes all the way back, conservation should not be owning the road.
Right. And hopefully, when they took ownership of this property, that, that shows an easement, you know, so that we don't have a difficult time if there's a restriction.
Mr. Sofinowski came up with a lot of things that he put into the registry, putting little things in. Just to try to prove that he owned the property. So therefore, since it was assumed by everyone that he owned the property, conservation, you know, they just, they're all.
Yeah. All right. We're, we're going to close this out now, because we've got to, oh, to finish our other business. But we thank you, Paul. We hope we've given you some good guidance and, and you can head in that direction. And if there's anything we can do to work with you, we will.
Appreciate it. As I say, we, I didn't say, but our farm is for sale. And so we want to move it there, put a house up there.
Yeah.
Upon selling the farm.
I remember the emails of this being discussed before. You know, I can't remember what year it was. Probably prior to the pandemic, there was some discussions going on back and forth. You know, about the road. So I know you've been working on it for a while.
Too long.
All right, thank you, Paul.
Gentlemen, we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District with their two articles. All right.
No surprises on those.
No surprises on that. And then we have the community preservation. There, they have one article, a bonding issue for the Allen treatment. Their.
Yeah, that's a recurring one. And then they got there to the reservation of funds, which they were working on, and those came in today. They're in your chair mail.
Okay.
And the admin one. And then the brass rail one. So it looks like they have four articles.
Okay. We have four so far, and we, the select board has an application in front of them for their meeting next week, right?
That is true. And obviously, you know, bond council has developed an article for that. It's, that is approved by them.
Yeah.
At whatever dollar amount.
All right. So that's what we have. I mean, obviously, we have all our housekeeping articles.
Yep, all the housekeeping articles, all the stuff you see every year, all the different funds, revolving funds, reauthorizations of that kind of stuff. So appointment of minor officers, town reports, all the things you typically see in a certain order of the warrant every year. And then in addition to this, you also have the special town meeting where you're going to be dealing with issues of the year-end snow and ice deficit, settlement agreements with bargaining units, the COVIDs you just voted on, things of that nature, contribution to O P S. We talked about, about the vacations, the vacation buyback, because we had issues with the pandemic and the outside auditors flying with that going on. And any other issue that you might move from the annual budget meeting discussion that the, your board, as well as the finance committee members, could be moved up. And one of the big issues we're going to have to deal with is the ambulance. You know, we're going to get money from the insurance company for the unit and the, the equipment. You know, we're going to get money from the insurance company for the unit, and the, uh, the equipment, but there's going to be a balance probably close to high 290s to 3, once we net out all the other stuff, so we're going to have to go address that too. So you can use this, or you can use ARPA money for that.
Okay. So as usual, we'll have our special town meeting prior to the annual town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, to take care of, uh, the year-end business, as you just mentioned, and a few, probably a few other items where we normally, uh, utilize free cash or other fund sources. And then we'll be going into the annual town meeting. Okay. All right, the next thing I have on the agenda is a, we have an LMC request, uh, appeal planning board decision regarding 141 Congammon Road. I believe, uh, what, uh, 141 is what.
Krabby Joe.
Krabby Joe, uh, with.
Mr. Eccleton.
Right, this is, this is list of petition that, that attorney, Don and you, had mentioned, we have that here. And then you also have guidance choices from your, um, your town council.
This is a, the new business outline in red is LMC request, appeal planning board decision regarding 141. This was a matter that we had addressed.
Yeah, this is sort of.
Two weeks ago.
Well, this is sort of along the lines of the warrant article discussions.
Correct, I, well, I haven't had a chance to review that document that came in that day.
Right.
From Mr. Eccleton, I did review Albano's piece. I will note that Chairman Doherty of the planning board is on the Zoom call tonight, and I appreciate him coming to chime in on this. Uh, I was charged with taking this action item and, and putting together a meeting with, Mr. Grinnell's, Mr. Doherty, and myself to discuss what, if anything, should be done as far as having, having a look at reconsidering the decision, and on advice of council, we were told that a motion to reconsider needs to be brought at the immediate next meeting of the board, which happened to be the night after we met. So the planning board did meet the following, last Tuesday, or two Tuesdays ago, right? Two weeks ago. They did have a, uh, significant discussion on the issue, there was a motion made and seconded, I believe, for a motion to reconsider their decision on the property at 141 Congammon Road, and I believe, the vote to, for the motion to reconsider failed, so therefore, the planning board's decision stood. There was a request at some point today, I believe, again, from Mr. Grinnell's, I have not had a chance to review it in its entirety, I was quite busy at work today. But to again have, for this board to give Lake Management right to go and retain counsel to pursue an appeal against the planning board. I don't see it. I, I think the planning board did not create an error at law, and or exceed their authority, or go off the reservation as to what they're permitted to do under zoning, to grant the, to grant a special permit for the use on that property. I had, did have a long conversation with Mr. Grinnell's two Mondays ago at night after the meeting, on my way home. Um, we talked about it, Mr. Doherty was kind enough to attend the Lake Management meeting that, that Thursday as well, as, as did I. And we both spoke to the petition, and as far as having, and, and Mike, please, if I'm putting words in your mouth, please feel free to come off mute and tell me to shut up. But Mr. Doherty did offer an affidavit on behalf of the planning board, would take a vote of his board, that just the granting of a special permit for a use didn't constitute their full and complete support for the installation of marina, they understood that that was part of a process, of which they have one piece to do, which they have done, but there's the chapter 91 part, there's the conservation part, and so on, which Lake Management would be encouraged, or, or, or within their purview to go and present, as is under the legal authority by which LMC operates, they operate legally via other boards, you know, they can advise the planning board, advise Lake Management, advise the state for chapter 91, or anything to do with the lake, and we fully support it. I do believe the, um, you know, after watching the meeting and listening to the testimony, that the planning board did take, you know, advice and consideration and input from Lake Management and others, in arriving their decision on a special permit. I also just think it's bad form unless, unless it's egregious to have a, one board bringing a lawsuit or a protest against another board, and I don't think that anything that was done by the planning board here rises to remotely close to that, that level. And, and I can speak with a little authority on that, because I, I think I was on the last board that brought suit against another town board, Paul will probably remember. And if it was not fun, it wasn't, you know, but it was, we felt that it was in the best interest of the town at the time. I don't think that's in the best interest of the, in, of the town at this time, to, to expend time, energy, and money to have one board bring an appeal against another board, and a project that's been, that had a public hearing open for months. There's still a lot of things that have to work out, including this parking license, or easement, or what have you, I haven't reviewed all the documents to understand how that's going to work out. So my take on it is, I, I would not support authorizing Lake Management to expend town funds to retain special counsel. And I, I do want to call attention to the fact that I believe the clock is running on that appeal, which may be as early as tomorrow, to file that appeal, um, with the court. I, I just don't, I don't think it's the right avenue, I don't think it's the right approach. I think that there's other ways, if, if Lake Management believes that a, a commercial marina, other than providing for, um, people to come and dock at, at the restaurant, to come and partake in, in the libations and food at that establishment, which they wholeheartedly seem to support, what they don't support is the renting of slips. Then that's, the process under chapter 91 is clear that there'd be avenues for public input and comment around them. And, and I, and, and in speaking to Mr. Grinnell's that night, a couple Mondays ago, I don't, I haven't met a single person yet that is in favor of having an abandoned building hovering over the lake, such as it is right now. It's, it's in everyone's best interest to have that place returned to some level of operation. And Mr. Grinnell's was a favor, I didn't hear anyone from Lake Management speak in, in opposition to that fact, so I think the process that has played out was legal, proper, and, you know, well thought out. And they took into consideration the input that was given at the meetings. So that's my opinion, and as the, the decision made from the board, that's my, my report back to the board is to not support, uh, hiring counsel, special counsel to, to oppose, uh, another board's decision at this time.
I, you know, my two cents is, I, I have to agree with you. I, I think we have a great group on the Lake Management, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Dick and the other board members, they work very hard, and, and on the same hand, we have five elected people on the planning board, elected by the citizens of the town of Southwick, that I think do a, a good job also. And I think, uh, you've helped clear this picture up a little bit by talking about people staying in their lanes. And, you know, I, I mean, we had different documents thrown at us today, literally today, that we haven't even had a chance to review. And, uh, I, I certainly am not going to make a quick decision, especially when I don't agree with, uh, using tax dollars for one board to take action against another board. I, I think a lot of these things can be worked out, uh, when people are calm, cool, and collective, uh, and, and do something in the best interest of the town itself, so, so I, I agree, uh, I think the Lake Management was asking us to take action tonight, but I, I'm not willing to do that. Chairman DeeDee, did you want to chime in on this?
I'm hearing, I, I'm seeing something on the chat that there's a, uh, an issue with the hyperlink on the, on the agenda, not sure. A lot of people can't get in, I mean, people, did some of the people who are in the.
Excuse me, they have to type in the number, they can't click on the link.
Okay. But didn't most people click on the link from the website to get into the meeting?
Somebody had texted me during the meeting, and I said there was 19 people on, or 17 or 19 people on the Zoom, so.
I typed it in.
Gotcha. I did too, because I had my agenda right in front of me, that's what I did, I didn't.
So what did they, would they just type, type in the passcode? Okay, so that's, it's all here, if they, do they.
They think you're not letting me in.
No, no, that's why I want to make sure that I have.
I assure you, that was the case, we've been.
So the meeting ID, so for anybody who's, anybody that needs to know, the meeting ID is 831-0541-0598, and the passcode is 299225. So would that be enough for them to be able to get on? Yeah, because I, I have other people that manually typed it in, they didn't have a problem, they just couldn't click on it, but they typed it.
Carl, if they used zoom.us, if they type in zoom.us, that will get them into Zoom, and then they can say, click on join a meeting, and put that information in.
Do we know how many people are trying to get in?
There's no one in the waiting room, so we don't know how many people couldn't actually get that far.
No, that's why you've got to, now that we've, we've spoke to the issue, we want to give people an opportunity.
But Mr. Grinnell's didn't text me or call me either regarding this, I'll be glad to text him the number.
Yes, some, some of the chat shows other people were able to get through and get on, so it's just a matter of.
What's that? So Mr. Vice Chairman, we made 10,000 people happy, duck, 20?
All right, so now, now Mr. DeeDee is going to mention that
He got in.
the meeting went downhill.
He got in.
He's not saying anything.
You're on mute, Jeff, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, he's, I, I think he's yelling at me, but I can't tell.
Mr. Chairman, you're on mute.
How was that?
Much better.
Guy, I went off the paper too.
Oh.
If the hyperlink isn't working, sorry, people make mistakes, nothing's perfect, we know that with this whole Zoom process. That's why I chose not to speak tonight and just be on the end game, because there is, there is issues at times, so.
Is, can't get on, we can just.
I just tested his, decided to use the meeting ID and password to log into the meeting. Just call him, and feel free to step out and call him, that's no problem either.
All right, we're going to take. We're going to take a couple of minutes here, give people an opportunity to get in.
Play that one on the internet.
Is that, is that Dick there? Can you really get right in? Yeah, okay, I see you.
You are.
Yep.
Good night, Paul.
Good night, Paul.
Good night, Mr. Gregoire.
Yeah.
What is thing right next to the speaker? What does it matter whether he's on the phone? Hey, Dick, I'm going to put your, the phone next to the speaker, and you can speak into the owl.
Yes, we can't get on the, the Zoom.
Yeah, but we can hear you now, so you're in the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, so I, the miss, I think everything, because had Michelle saying that she couldn't get on the Zoom, and Dev Harris couldn't either.
Yep. Well, Michelle's in now, and some of the other people are, so what is it, I think that Mr. Fox wants to hear what other sides are of this perspective.
You have the floor, Dick.
Yeah, well, as we said in the, in the email, is that, in the, in the letter, is that this thing's kind of going sideways, in that, I guess the best way to put is the cart, cart is before the horse, there's not, we agree that they should have a, a chapter 91 license for, uh, the, uh, visitors, you know, transient visitors from the lake. Because that doesn't take in, you know, that doesn't add to the lake at all, doesn't add boats to the lake. Uh, it doesn't require any additional parking, it doesn't require the use of parking that's on state slash land, and could clear the hurdles, we think, right now. Thing is, is they did not address the other issue, because the drawing shows the docks to be 150 feet long. Uh, we're saying 75 feet to keep them out of the, uh, the entrance to the culvert, and the navigation lanes. And we've been over that, over that, but unfortunately, that was the way it was written by the planning board, and, and approved, and they would not reconsider. Had we reconsidered, we could have straightened those things out. And keep on going.
Thank you, Mr. Grinnell, I think we should recognize Mr. Doherty.
Thanks, Dick, we're going to let, uh, the chairman of the planning board.
And, and in the meantime, before that happens. Dick, you can feel free to jump on Zoom, and just use the meeting ID and password to join this meeting, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I'll try that, I'll see if I can get on.
And let Dev know, right, I didn't, I did not have her phone number. But, uh, Mr. Doherty.
Do you want me to wait till Dick joins, or do you want me to?
I'm on.
He's on, he's on the phone, so.
That's fine. So, you know, for the issue that we're here to discuss, which is the appeal, obviously, I would disagree with Dick, I mean, I think the simple answer is, he and, and similarly, the Lake Management Committee believe that there shouldn't be a marina there. The issues were presented at the planning board, the planning board decided the way it did. And, uh, you know, I don't see it as a, as, as an appellate issue in any way, shape, or form. As I think was mentioned before by Doug, you know, we, we are dealing with the use, um, we aren't necessarily dealing with, um, or, or taking a position necessarily um, on the exact design of the docks, in, in any way, shape, or form, other than the fact that we asked that one of them be removed that was closest to the culvert, to address some navigation issues, based on what we heard. Um, but we fully expect and understand that, in the process of getting a chapter 91 license, as well as the other permits and license that they need, that those stocks may change, um, and uh, be reconfigured, and that simply just needs to come back to us on a, um, on a final site plan that we would look at and approve.
You could have saved all this had that site plan that came, that was dated 22822, been circulated to those who had already provided comments to the planning board, prior to the planning board meeting with said document, without circulating it.
So Dick, I, and, and because you brought that up, let me just respond to that, because I think, um, it needs to be put in a little bit of context, which is, um, a, a meeting which the Lakes Management Committee clearly has a position on, was opened, um, and continued to, um, is it, what was it, February 28th, or March 1st, whatever, we had the meeting on. Um, a plan was submitted probably a few hours before the meeting. It was presented at the meeting, it was discussed at the meeting, it was available in the planning board. And no one from the Lakes Management Committee showed up at the meeting, um, accessed the meeting online after it was done, or went to the planning board meeting to get any new materials. And so, uh, I appreciate, and we certainly made sure that going forward, if there's any. And so I appreciate, and we certainly made sure that going forward, if there's any application that we think is related to the lakes, not only will we circulate what we get at the beginning, we will circulate any new materials that come in throughout the course of the public hearing. But it's certainly not a requirement, and those materials are certainly available and would be would have been viewed had you attended the meeting, which I don't
But you have to know it's there to attend it, Mike, and that's the problem, is that we don't know that that drawing exists unless you circulate it in advance so we can review it diligently and provide a good feedback, and you can't do that in a meeting. You have to do that, plying over that drawing in great detail, because a lot of comments were made, and the whole intent was to find out whether issues were resolved or not. And you can't do that the last minute in the meeting, and you should know that.
I think that both parties have stated their position. I don't want to get into this back and forth. Are you comfortable with your position that you've stated? Mr. DeeDee, would you like to add anything? Was that a no? I think we lost them.
No, I'm off that.
Okay. All right. I think we've, we've made our position clear, and and I hope both boards understand what we're saying here. There was other documents submitted by the applicant. I have no intention of making any decisions on any easements of right of way or anything like that. I'm just one person of the three-member board, but I'm not going to make any quick decisions until everything is ironed out and we have a full understanding, and that's a full understanding from the planning board and from lakes management. And I don't know about you, Mr. Mowgli, and I'm not going to address anything that that came in from attorneys
Today.
Today. You know, I have no intentions of making any quick decisions.
And I think there's avenues to review the the chapter 91 portion, and there's going to be multiple opportunities for lake management to come in and make a an impassioned appeal as to how that should or shouldn't be allowed, and if it is allowed, how it should look. And and, you know, I will concur with you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and I was remiss, you know, you know, between Deb and Norm and Dr. Mueller and Dick, there's, it's such a great resource, and they do bring a ton to bear here. And and they were instrumental in giving, you know, information to the planning board, and I think that they did act, the planning board did take all of the information that was presented to them into a board. And like I said, from a straight-up appeal, I just don't see it, and I don't see the value in in bringing a legal appeal against a and defending a planning board decision. So that's just my opinion at this time. I wouldn't support sending this to appear.
Okay. So I think, I don't think we need a motion, because we're not going to take any action. Unless I hear differently. Steinhardt, you feel we need to take a mo, take a motion?
No, you can decline, or you can make an affirmative motion, whatever you prefer.
I just choose not to take any action.
And as for the other stuff, I mean, that was presented to us today
Right.
For, you know, it would carry under old business under under on our agenda, and probably has to go to council anyway.
Right. So we're not making any quick decisions. That's the bottom line. All right. Other new business, Mr. Steinhardt.
Mr. DeeDee and myself set for the two candidates for the conservation commission and CPC interviews for next Monday evening, so we're going to have the final interviews for that. So I'll need some questions from board members. So get those in to me, please.
Two questions? Any other new business? Chairman DeeDee, any new business?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mowgli, new business?
I think we did enough tonight. We're backing pretty good. I'll stop, I'll put while we're ahead.
I just have one thing, and maybe our channel 15 expert can help us out here. In the past, when the flags were lowered to half-staff, I got an email of why they were being lowered to half-staff, and I no longer get those emails.
From the state?
From the state.
Yeah, they just send them to one or two people.
Okay.
Yeah, I get some of them. I don't know if I get them all, but I get some of them.
Is is there some way, because I have people coming up to me, because unfortunately, the flag has gone up and down so many times, and I know it's usually because we've lost someone in the military or the president or the governor has announced something. Is there some way we could set it up so that when the flags go to half-staff, that is put on channel 15, so people will have a a place to go to to find out the individual who's being honored or the event?
I think what we could do, sir, is we can, we can look to see where they originate from and ask them what it would be to be on their distribution list, and then we could figure out who we could put on that list, the various members of the select board in channel 15, so that that information would come to everybody instead of one person having to spoon-feed it to the entire organization
Right.
Because of different reasons.
Right. But it, you know, I know this past week, several people came to me and asked me, and I felt a little embarrassed, I couldn't tell them, and I tried to locate it online, I couldn't find it.
No, I think over the weekend, you must be referring to stuff coming in late last week.
Right, right. But I, again, not to be repetitive, it used to come right to as as a text or an email, so I knew exactly what the reason was. So anyway, if we could look into that. And thank you for whoever got the flags up for donate life.
That was Mr. Sutton missed that.
That was excellent. We're going on to old business. North Pond violations, we're still waiting for that development. Town hall roof design and bidding is underway.
Yep, there's going to be a site visit tomorrow for vendors.
Okay. Community preservation application, that meeting is scheduled for, the town's application for the town hall roof is scheduled for April 13th. I believe the historical commission is taking their vote on it tonight, so that'll be good. And we'll be meeting with the finance committee?
Next week.
Next week. Okay. But our our budget hearing is Wednesday?
Of this week, yeah.
Okay, that's a workstation Wednesday for the select board.
Great. And the guy in the mobile home.
And the guy in the mobile home, and that's at?
Five thirty.
Five thirty with the town account. All right. Sewer system, IMA, we know that's up and running and getting headed, hopefully headed in the right direction. We've, we've begun working on the board and committee procedures. Thank you, Mr. Mowgli, for the work you did on that. We've already gone over the special town meeting and eight annual town meeting warrant articles that we have so far. We've all agreed on the deputy fire chief recruitment process that's underway. And now, the next thing that we said we would discuss tonight is the job description for the assistant CIO position. I
I reviewed it.
Okay, I reviewed it. You're looking for, I'm going to begin, and then we'll go with Joe. I, I thought it was very good. I think it spells it out. The, and I have one concern, though, when you get to educational work experience required. We're a 28 million-plus operation, and when I see just a high school diploma or equivalent three years of work experience in the same related field, I think that, quite frankly, we should be starting out with a bachelor's, you know. I mean, again, this is, if we were in the private sector, we wouldn't be looking for somebody with just a high school diploma. I know we have a preferred bachelor's degree in business, human resource, accounting or related field
Yep.
With five to seven years of experience in public administration, and I think that's good, but I would recommend that we change the required to a bachelor's. But that would be the only change that I would recommend.
So Doug, if you've got different edits on your version, just send them to me.
I saw that as well, and the only thing I had, I had done it a little different was it offered a a longer tenure of experience somewhere else rather than the degree, but mensa mens.
Right, so we have Russ's comments, so if you can give me yours, then I can send them.
Yep, I must have left them on the table when I was editing it last night.
Joe, do you have any comments?
I'm fine if you add that in. If it doesn't work, we'll relook at it.
And it's a preference, right? So it, you're going to change it to a requirement instead of a
You're right, for the required, I'd just be that a bachelor's. That'd be the only thing, other than I think it, this is
So you give me yours, Doug will give me yours.
I'll get it to you tonight, but tomorrow, bye.
Okay. Make a note that this is from Russ.
Okay. Any other old business? Mr. Steinhardt? Mr. Chairman, any old business?
I'll say no old business.
Thank you. Doug?
Nothing. I was surprised and saddened by the passing of Mr. Phipkey, and I'd be just a little remiss if, he was a good egg, rough around the edge, but a good egg, and you never had to worry where you's, finding out where you stood with Don Phipkey. And if you didn't want to know, you wouldn't know.
Straightforward guy.
So Godspeed, Don.
Right, it's, we've lost another part of the history of the town of Southway.
The stories he told me, I told him he should write a lot of them down. I hope he did for some of them, because they end with you, John.
I, I asked him if he would meet with the historical society, where they videotape people like Clay Seago and gentlemen, senior moment, Babs, you know, and those things, the stories, the information is great, you know, and you lose that, you lose that every time, if you don't have it recorded or written down. All right, if there is no further business, there is no need for an executive session.
No.
So I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second that. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Joe DeeDee, aye.